Back at it again, activated podcast, we here.
What it do? Your boy real Walter Ford in this thing.
Millie Rocket is here, your boy Matt.
Activated podcast, man, we back, man, we missed y'all.
Happy Sunday.
Yeah, happy Sunday, today's September 12th. You know what I'm saying? Condolences, prayers, all the victims of nine eleven, people that lost family members, you know, and it's it was three hundred and forty-three firefighters, I believe, that perished, could be wrong.
Rest in peace to, you know, all the people that America killed after that too, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, the aftermath.
Millions that we displaced after that, yeah.
Okay, millions and millions. And all the also, the innocent people that lost their lives fighting, fighting this wars, not the people that we killed or that we misplaced, the people that had to go and do it.
Yeah.
Carry out the deeds.
Yeah, the same people in in the Middle Eastern countries who fought and and died, shout out to those people, because the world's a mess and America's the reason, alright.
Like, we got that off the way at the beginning.
Colonialism and imperialism.
Yeah, that's a motherfucker. And and real quick, uh, I wrote this down, so I want to say it, so right after that, from now, since, uh, when it was two thousand and one, Muslim hate crime, hate crimes against people of the Muslim faith has been up about five hundred percent since then. Uh, if you was in a Muslim country, you had to join a registry during the Bush administration, even if he was a baby. You have to put your baby in a register, even if you was from a country that had nothing to do with anything, if your country was Muslim, then you and if you don't go on the registry, you detained, they detained in your baby.
Yeah, that's that white colonialism for ya.
Yeah.
That's fucking, I didn't know that, I had no idea that they had to be put in a registry, that's disgusting.
That's crazy, and and again, it doesn't even, you remember how, uh, with the Muslim ban, they was like, we just gonna pick these random ass countries, it's just like it's like, said random ass countries that had nothing to do with anything, it was like.
That's disgusting.
Y'all gotta, yeah, so, so you, we gotta share both sides of the situation, you know what I'm saying, yeah, share both sides. Um, see, y'all wanna, since we talking about stuff like that, y'all wanna get into the.
Oh, the activists.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say.
So a new, a new TV show is gonna air with, uh, Usher.
ABC, ABC has has approved it for development.
My understanding is is that it's already developed, man, it's it's premiering August, or I mean, it's premiering October twenty-second, and it's CBS, CBS, and it's with, uh, the hosts are Usher, Priyanka Chopra, and Julianne Hoff.
Who?
Yeah.
Oh, when I recognized was Usher, Juliana Hoff, yeah, uh, Priyanka Chopra, Priyanka Chopra is like, uh, she like, uh, actress and a motivational speaker.
Yeah, she's, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, she she famous in American now, but yeah, she started, she was like a Bollywood actress, and she's like, uh, a motivational speaker type swag. And it's interesting though, because like.
I mean, how were you gonna make a TV show about activism, though, I don't even wanna, let's just get it out the way.
Yeah.
A corporate TV show about activism.
Cause they like marches money. What are niggas watching right now?
I can only, I can only help, like, wonder like. What?
Damn, Usher.
What are you, what like, what are you really gonna talk about, what are you really gonna show, what are you really gonna like?
Here, let me, let me, cuz the, I'll put out the article, that's a good question, that's a very good question.
Yeah, yeah.
Here we go, right here, activists go head to head in challenges to promote their causes with their success measured via online engagement, social metrics and host input, the three teams have one ultimate goal, to create impactful movements that amplify their message, drive action, and advance them to the G twenty summit in Rome, so that they can meet with world leaders in the hope of securing funding and awareness for their causes. So it's not an activist.
Yeah, if you win, you need to go to the G twenty something, get some, get some donations. But it's it's crazy how like, again, like you, I think you said this off camera fam, like, what's really getting changed, like, what, what kind of, what's really the overall goal in this whole thing? You know what I'm saying, like, what? Like, what's, what's the outcome?
Well, it's to commodify activism, it's to make it, it, to make it into a corporate, they don't like the radicalness of some people's politics that have come out over the last year and a half, they want to whitewash it, basically corporatize it, you know what I mean? You corporatize activism, then it's, it changes people's minds about it, you know what I mean? It's, oh, okay, this is the right way to do it, is through the corporate, you know, this, you gotta secure funding, so you could go to G twenty to meet with world leaders, that's what the activist is.
Hey, when you say that, real quick, that reminded me of what people is like, you don't, you don't bring awareness by kneeling on the, during the anthem, you don't bring awareness by marching in the street and messing up, you don't bring awareness by, you know what I'm saying, when they say all the shit that they say, this is not the right way to do it, and they'll be like, what's the right way to do it then?
And they're, they're. But they got no answer, they got no, I don't know, but it's, but it, but it isn't this, this isn't the way.
Martin Luther King wouldn't have done this. That's my favorite, my bad, I'm going off, that's just so fried to me, bruh, that's so, I'm really just disappointed in my nigga Usher, man, like.
Nah, they were, they've been getting roasted for it, like, I'm hoping it actually doesn't air, because it's kind of like, it's, it's kind of the point people have been pointing out is, it's, I mean, corporations and people co-opted and, you know, tried to commodify last year's movement hella, and tried to water it down hella.
McDonald's donated this many millions of dollars to black communities, just because.
Again, I can't remember.
Like, what?
Again, remember, after all last year, all the corporations started pandering to black people and Black Lives Matter and all that kind of stuff. And then, uh, what is it, June comes around, Pride Month comes, everybody got rainbows and stuff, but the second July first came, they took all the rainbow shit down. Like, there's just, it's all, it's all pandering, it is.
Yeah, it's all that money, that trend fam, if you, if it's trendy, it's money, which is why this, I'm pretty sure, right when the protests was coming out, they was like, we're gonna make the TV show, that's like you said, it's been a development, you know what I'm saying, like, TV shows get shot like months beforehand, you know what I'm saying, so like, they had to like, been doing this for a minute.
I mean.
You know?
It, it, I give it, yeah, yeah.
I give it all, I give it this year, I give it, they started this year.
Yeah, they're gonna do one season, it's gonna be one season, people, cuz people have been on it, like, you know what I mean, a lot of people are like, that's, that's the number one thing you should not do, is make a TV show about at corporate activism, where they're trying, where they're head to head, trying to beat each other for their cause, that's fucking stupid.
Also, they gonna make a TV show and they got no Auntie Litchin bill?
Well, hold on, and know the George, what about the George Floyd crime bill that they've been telling us they're gonna pass all this time, like?
I know, and if you win Georgia, we're gonna get the crime bill, remember that?
These motherfuckers, and it's the same thing, uh, just real quick, cuz California did their own like, um, thing where it's, what, what is it called, oh my god, I'm working so hard.
It's like a boat or?
The decertification, where that the police aren't licensed anymore, I know the word, I just.
Oh. You talking about the SB bill?
Yeah, but god, it's something, it's.
I don't know nothing about that, I ain't gonna lie to you.
I don't know the fucking word.
Decertification, what, like, the police become civilians or like, regular civilians can do policing?
No, it's, it's basically like, so when, um, a cop is convicted or charged or whatever, or fired, they can't just go join another department.
Right, so, so it's like a nurse losing their license, okay, so, at first, it was like really easy to do, so that in the bill, in the California bill, to, you know, make it legal to decertify police, at first, it was, you know, I think it was like fifty percent or whatever of the people had to vote for it to decertify the police, so if the police did something, it takes like half of whoever to decertify them, but like, they changed the bill to where it's like three fourths of whoever it is needs to vote for it to decertify the police. So it made it hard, it's gonna make it even harder, so they're passing this bill, but it's like, it's not gonna actually be able to decertify.
It's not gonna do shit.
Yeah.
It's not really gonna do shit, yeah, I know, it's gonna affect the the minimum amount of people.
Well, and the last thing about it, cuz politicians are like, oh, we're gonna make a bill and make it illegal for police to use tear gas and pepper bullets on people, but they were doing that all through cities, judges would tell the city, you're not allowed to use, uh, you know, in Portland, they did it, you're not allowed to use tear gas anymore, because there's so much, you're using so much tear gas, and they fucking, they didn't give a fuck, they were mandated to not do it, they still were tear gassing people all the time right after.
They tear gassing people right now, remember, like, remember like, uh, two weeks ago, was that, like, two or three weeks ago? When the people was boxing, like, and they flipped the van over and like, did you got shot?
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 no, 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 it, it's so bad, no, the Portland police didn't do anything up there, the Proud Boys and then the, the Antifa, they were fighting, and then the cops did nothing, they, they did absolutely nothing.
My bad, I said the wrong thing, man, I'm sorry about that, but they wasn't like, they was like, they was like, everybody, dude got pulled a gun out, you start shooting people, like, I'm like, that, this is great, if I don't say that, great. So this is the whole thing, alright, so, uh, yeah, so if y'all wanna go to something else, uh, what, y'all, what y'all think about that vaccine mandate, that's gonna affect a hundred million people that, uh, Joe Biden pretty much said, well, I forgot the exact details, was it all government workers?
So all, all federal, yes, and then it, it's all private businesses over a hundred employees.
Employees, yeah.
All business over a hundred employees, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, I think that it was coming, and I think that people are all pissed about nothing, and that, I mean, it's, I'm so over it, like, but my question is, is like, uh, cuz I got the vaccine, but my question is, is why can you, uh, mandate vaccines, but you can't mandate masks? That's my only question, because we should have had them. That's all, my only question is, I heard you, feds can't mandate masks, like, they can't, but they can mandate vaccines, so it just, it doesn't really make sense, that's the only thing that's backwards to me.
That's fried as hell, cuz you right, cuz the second, both medical.
Uh, preventive measures.
Yeah, that's the word I'm looking for, like, legal medical preventative measures, and I'm never like, that's crazy, you're right, you're right, cuz that, that was the big thing, that he's like, we're gonna all have to wear masks, and then they had to, the information had to come out, like, nigga, they can't even do that, but they can do it with like, the vaccines, like, which is crazy.
Well, I think it's, I think, I think it's funny, cuz the military too, they're all, there's military people freaking out about vaccines, but like, the military gets the most vaccines out of anybody, like.
They already did it.
They get the craziest vaccines you've never even heard of, so it's like.
I was literally just gonna say that, everybody I ever met was like, bro, I'm pumped up for so much.
Bro.
Somebody can get sick for thirty years.
When you go to basic training, the first week of your basic training in all branches is called reception, and in that reception, you get all your shots, you get all your medical history, you get all your life insurance, you set up everything for your military career, but in terms of that medical, bro, it's like three days where you're just seeing doctors, and they're just giving you shots. So it's like, it's like, yeah, multiple places, it's like multiple days, you sit there and they just give you shots, like, everybody's sitting in there and in some shorts. Deadass, no, pause, pause, they make you sit nut to butt and wait to get shots on top of shots.
That's so fried, bruh.
I mean, I believe it, I believe it, I mean, you would want everybody vaccinated, that's why they, they do it, I mean, they know, there's hundreds of years of these things, I mean, that's why they would, they vaccinated everybody or inoculated them, cuz it wasn't a vaccine then, uh, for smallpox back in like the seventeen hundreds or whatever, at the end of the seventeen hundreds, they would inoculate militaries so that they wouldn't get smallpox when they're doing stuff.
Also, I think it's fried.
Funny, but really quick, yeah.
I was gonna say it's fried, because to go to elementary school, you had to have a vaccination card, and niggas act like this is a new thing, that's like, it just came out or like a new word or like, uh, well, you, to go to elementary school fam, in public school, your ass had to get the flu shot, uh, was it measles?
And, uh, smallpox.
And then.
And hepatitis.
There's a lot, you have to get a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like eight, bro, it's like eight, it's like seven, eight shots.
It's every, it's for middle school, high school, and universities too, so like, always, always, every time you go to a new school, they're, they're supposed to see your vaccination record. So like, if you go to a university across the nation right now, you, you have to be vaccinated against XXXXX, and you have to show proof, you have to. Like, you don't get in, you're not allowed to be in if you don't, so just.
It's just like, like you said, bro, it's just fried as hell, that is like, brought up, like, it's a new thing, and it's like, this just destroying America, and this is the market of beast, and like, Joe, I mean, Joe Biden ain't the best, I ain't gonna say it like he, whatever, the greatest, whatever, he's fucking up too.
They, they call it communism, that's what they call it, it's communism.
Running over, they said, if y'all look, if you Google communism, civil rights movement, that's all they said during then too, like, they was like, desegregation is communism and Marxism, like, they say this exact same shit that they say right now about all the other shit they don't like, like, it's, it's real life, key adults attacking kids. This is communism, like, bro, okay, real quick, to end on that, Ruby Bridges, who was like the little girl that went to the first desegregation, she sixty-seven fam, she ain't even that old. She still alive.
I mean, that's it, yeah.
So don't let these motherfuckers fool you, that, that, that shit was, just cuz the pictures being black and white, that it was a law against. So, yeah, real quick, I just gotta say this while we speaking though, like, crazy bills and crazy laws and stuff, uh, uh, the governor of Texas, we already talked about last week, the, 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 um, the craziest anti-abortion bill ever passed re- recently, is pretty much if you six weeks, uh, pregnant, you can't get an abortion after that, or a private citizen that doesn't know you or doesn't know anybody can sue you personally for ten thousand dollars and the person that gave you a rap. And they, and they asked him on the, like, a conference or meeting, he's like, they like, what do you gotta tell to women that are raped and victims incest, and, you know, other different situations that can't get an abortion, and his, oh, these old white dudes be crazy, so he was like, first off, we have six weeks where a woman can make a decision, blah, 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 we already talked about it, but you gotta say it again, most women don't even know that they pregnant until four weeks, because they have a missed period, is the first sign, and then, and then secondly.
No, I think it's eighty-five percent of women don't know they're pregnant until after six, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Which is why, which is why it's such a big deal, because if it was, well, I mean, anything shorter than that would have made it a big deal too, but like, if they had done it, like.
They got it on the cusp, that's why they put it right there, they was like, when is the earliest we can do it, that was like the cusp, and then.
Well, and it's, they call it a heartbeat, they call it a heartbeat, and that's when you're not allowed to do it, but it's not even a heartbeat, cuz they don't even have a heart yet, and it's just like electrical impulses is really what it is, is, is what they can see, is the heart.
I was about to say.
Not even a heart yet, like.
I was saying, no, organs, I'll say organs don't even develop until like, week eleven or whatever, like, I thought.
It, it's not till later, it's not even a heart, like, it's not, it's the size of.
But that's what I'm saying.
I mean, it's, but that's, still settles, is what it is.
Yeah, so real quick, so that they asked him this, and the governor of Texas, who got voted in by his constituents, so whatever you fuck, you wanna call it, said, uh, we're gonna, first off, rape is illegal, and Texas is gonna fight, Texas is gonna fight to eliminate rape, we're gonna convict. It probably cut me off for a second, but anyway, he said, uh, we're gonna eliminate rape, we're gonna put rapists in jail, we're gonna convict them and get them off the streets of Texas, and everybody was like, woo! And I'm like, wait a minute, so your answer to this, rape is, you're gonna eliminate rape, my nigga? You been, that's what you finna do, one person, and like the, the, it's like the third or fourth most populated state in the country, you finna eliminate rape? That's your, that's your answer.
Which would be good, but I mean, like, if they could, but I mean.
Well, they already been doing that.
Like, haven't you already been trying to eliminate rape, haven't we been trying to eliminate rape for hundreds of years, like?
I thought that was an ongoing, I thought that was an ongoing thing, like.
Bro, it's just so fried, like, how these people just use words in a particular order, and it be like, yeah! Like, that sentence has, it makes no sense at all, like, he was confident, but anyway, but I'll cut you off, you were saying something important. But yeah, I just had to put that out there, and that these niggas is crazy, or these, these governors, excuse me, these governors and like, these people in these positions, obviously, are just talking faces. You know what I'm saying?
They, and they just put words together hoping they stick, you know, they don't, they don't care about the meaning, communism, Marxism, state, Joe Biden's a socialist.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, let's do this last one, cuz I know the lady gotta go, uh, the Poway School Board, because that's a big one, so, a bunch of anti-maskers went to, uh, Poway Unified School Board, um, and there was a meeting there, they all gathered there, and, um, it was a closed meeting because of COVID, and so only like a few people were allowed to come in and comment, and they were live streaming the rest, and they barely hold these meetings, I, I, I think the school board meetings are only like once a month, or like once every few months or whatever, and, uh, supposedly, they forced their way in, that was the words that were used, they forced their way in, and when they were in there, they caused, they caused so much disruption that the board had to adjourn, the school board had to adjourn, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. And, and so as they're adjourning, the people are telling the board members, you should be arrested, you should be arrested, and SDPD is the ones who told supposedly the board to leave and didn't kick out the people who were trying to disrupt the meeting, and these people declared themselves the new school board, they got sworn in, and a, a man named Derek Greco said he's the new president of the school board, so they overthrew the school board, and SDPD sat there and watched and let them do it, while the board members were like getting their stuff, and they, they believed that they're the new school board, so they did it, they did a school board group.
They had it, they, okay, my bad.
It looks like January sixth, but with a school board.
I was saying before we got on here, I said, they thought they was a Knights of the Medieval Roundtable fam, like, we're gonna come, and we're gonna, but like, I was like, you the new, you the new king now, cuz you the, you the emperor fam, so it's funny, cuz they stood in a circle, and the dude in the middle was like, all right, God has, what did he say, God has adjourned this for something and something, and, and you're gonna be the new leader of this, you're the new leader of this, I'm gonna be the new president. Just so you say it out loud, but my G does not mean that this is a real, like, you know what I'm saying, like, this is so fried, bro, like, these people are so fried. Like, I can't, and I remember that this is all of the kids wearing masks at school.
And remember that none of them have children that go to the school.
None of them have kids.
Uh, that, in that school district, none of them have children that go.
Oh, for real, I didn't know that, oh, for real, they go.
The new school board president said, he said, this is taxation without representation, and this is how the American revolution started the first time, that's what this fool said after.
At the school board meeting. Oh, my god, I, hey, no, it's cute, man, white people be bored as hell.
I mean, that's what I mean, is that's like the whitest thing I've ever, you know what I mean, like.
Born in town, oh fam, you ain't got shit.
Where the school board?
Yeah, yeah.
This is our revolution.
That's what you're talking about. The, the lunch, the lunch menu, like, come on, bro, and they, and they was like dancing, they had like prayer, and they was like, really, like, they really left, and, and like, I, I can't imagine them getting in the car on the drive home, like, yeah, we did that.
Hey, 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 they went, they went to eat after, I swear to god, they went to eat after, and there was a new guy, or another guy, he, he said, I'm the, this is the new school clerk, right? The new school board clerk, which is just a position on the board, and, and he said, okay, so why don't you explain what a quorum is, and you know what happened? And the last thing this fool said was, yeah, we voted on no masks for schools, and we also voted on, uh, not teaching critical race theory, that's what that fool said.
I, I remember CNN.
Which, just, just cuz we gotta say it out loud, critical race theory is a law class in college. Just like everybody knows.
But it shows you what they, you know what I mean, it shows you who they really are, you know what I mean, that's, that's what you voted on, you didn't vote on more, more money for the schools, you didn't vote on more resources, you didn't vote on more teachers, higher teacher salaries, you voted on fucking no masks and fucking no CRT, which doesn't even fucking exist, bro, at your school, what the fuck?
And then drove home like, yeah, we did that.
They said, we're gonna release the names to the press.
Yeah, you forgot, you gotta, you gotta mention it again, they did all of that, for a, for a school that they don't have kids attending yet.
I tell y'all, so, bro, if you got, if you had shit to do, I would not be on your.
So, wait, 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 so what, what about your kids, what are like, what about your, where?
That shit wild, man, and, and, uh, so is that the ending, like, they just went and the clerk dude, he said, that's, we voted on CRT?
Yeah, 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 they said, we're gonna release the names of the new board to the press in the next few days.
Like, that's gonna do something, like, this is the new one, everybody's gonna look at it like.
On a serious note, it shows like what these people are trying to do, and, and like, if I was a school board member, like, I wouldn't be, I would be prepared for, to have to fight someone, you know what I mean? That's what they, cuz that's what they're getting ready to do, is start, you know, someone's gonna come up and attack a politician at one of these board meetings, like.
And often have my strap right in the, in the trunk, in the black box, the California, whatever, rules.
I mean, they keep escalating, like, I seen a video in Tennessee where they were harassing the doctor, they were leaving, the doctor couldn't leave, and the cops are just like, letting it happen, like, they're screaming at the fucking doctor, like, about to assault this fool, and the sheriff is just standing there, like, watching it happen, you know what I mean, and not helping whatsoever, it's the same thing with SDPD, they.
Cuz he wanted, cuz they wanna be part of it, they just.
Well, they agree with it, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, that's it, that's the secret underlying thing.
And that's the problem, is when you have the lawmakers not being able to make their laws, and then the police not enforcing anything but what they feel is the law, so it's, and that always happens, like, let's not, let's not, you know, get it twisted, it's always been like that, police enforce laws whatever way they feel like it, you know what I mean?
Create a law.
Yeah.
Cool, and then we throw a hand, like you said, Q, then we throw hands then.
They, all the school boards should mandate, uh, MMA classes.
Every teacher needs to be equipped with self-defense classes.
Yeah, no, put self-defense, you need to be able to put somebody to chokehold or figure four leg lock.
I wouldn't be prepared, I wouldn't want, you know what I mean, the police to protect me, cuz they're not going to, they agree with them, they're gonna let it happen, so you're finna have to throw hands.
Exactly. How you think we feel, how you? How you think me and Walter feel, they gonna shoot us, they just gonna.
Speaking of that, can we end on this?
Hey, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, everything was, uh, freaking out, it was freaking out on my end, so say that, what you just said again.
You were the only, you were the only one that was frozen, I ain't gonna lie to you, man.
But, but, it's recording, it's recording through my computer, yeah, 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 so say it again, say it again.
Yeah.
Oh, cuz I, I heard like part of it, say it again.
He said, we should bring.
No, I say, yeah, I say, Walter needs to bring the bro coat back.
Nah, before that, what were you saying about the cops, you were saying, how, how do you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, my bad.
Go ahead, say it again, cuz it didn't record.
Okay, okay, so real quick, uh, the a man in, I believe, Texas. Shot the police. I could be wrong. Did y'all see that? He shot the police and then he, there's no charges against him. He shot the police through his front door. After they announced, he was like, boo, 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 Southern County Police. He shot him through the door. He like, ah, and then they like, he he come outside with this and they like, come on, bring your hands up. And he just went outside, they arrested him and then he guys no charges against him. He let go, he gotta let go for free. And he shot the police.
Did anybody get hit?
Yeah, yeah, he shot the police. He shot him. He shot him.
No, that's what I'm saying. Like, did he shot at him or he shot and hit him?
Yeah, he hit him through, but he hit the police and shot him and he got, he got off on a self-defense law. Yes. And he got off on self-defense.
And what state?
And uh, I believe it's Texas. I could be wrong. Uh, I'm somebody might have to look it up, but it don't matter. It don't even matter what state fam. Men, women of color and kids.
I mean, what?
He shot the police, he shot the police.
I mean, yeah.
And also, remember, think about this though. He got to walk out of his house with his hands up and get arrested peacefully fam. After he shot the police.
For sure.
You know what I'm saying?
You know, that's probably, I'm gonna be honest, bro. That's probably not the only one that that's out there. The only one.
Yeah, no.
He was probably just the only one whose situation creeped.
As the police. And the dude shot him and they, and he got off on a uh, self. So, but anyway. I just gotta end it on, exactly, bro. Exactly, exactly, exactly. So I just wanna let y'all know, it's possible for police to show restraint. It's hope. That is a possibility.
Only when they feel like it. Only when they.
Hey, yeah, exactly.
Hey, hey, Walter, you know that SpongeBob meme where it has him looking at a book and he's cross-eyed? And it's like, this is literally that moment cuz I don't know if I wanna laugh at that shit because the nigga shot the police and got away with it or the fact that he shot the police and got away with it. Like, that's fucked up. That's hilarious and that's what the fuck?
Super fucked up. Yeah, man. Yeah. So I think I think that's a good little note to end on. It's it's hope. That some police don't kill you if you shoot. Oh, not though, my name is Walter.
It's your boy, Activated Podcast.
It's your boy Mac. Stay activated. Oh, man. And we out.
We gone.
Stay blessed. Arrest the killers of Breonna Taylor.